I wish I could read my own handwriting.
Oh, man. I hear ya.
You know, part of that's a generational thing. It's only gotten worse. My kids, their handwriting is still is, and there's worse. But, you know, you're typing all the time, and you're interacting with that type of technology.
Yeah. I blame it on, I like completely broke my arm.
Two sides are gonna be hanging in the mouth.
Running out of right time.
Yeah, that's kind of like pivotal, yeah.
A whole year of not really being able to do that. I don't, that's what I blame it on anyways.
Yeah, yeah.
It's an interesting experience, isn't it? Kind of bizarre.
Now we're part of extraordinarily small part of the population I know is.
Yeah.
Yeah. It gives you a level of empathy for.
Yeah, most definitely.
Hello and welcome candidates to this count, yes, welcome candidates to this candidate forum featuring candidates running for the Iowa City Council seat representing District C. I'm Shaden Patrick, member of the League of Women Voters of Johnson County, and I will be moderating this forum tonight. Our team keep, our timekeeper is League member Susie Corbin Muir. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer, nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes any party or candidate. The League does take positions after considerable study of issues and acts to influence decisions on those issues. We work not only to register voters, but also to provide them with information on issues to assist their participation in government. Membership is open to anyone 16 years of age and older. Join us. We could use your time, your talent, and your financial resources. League members advocate and inform voters. Democracy works best when more people are involved. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates. All viable candidates have been invited to participate. The format of this evening will be as follows. First, after candidates have been introduced, each will have two minutes to give opening statements. We will then present questions to them. Our schedule of questions comes from our audience and from League members. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. There will not be time for rebuttals. We are scheduled for an hour. Near the end of our scheduled time for this event, each candidate will have two minutes for closing remarks. Speaking order will be rotated throughout the evening. Our timekeeper will be using cards to alert candidates when time is up and, uh, when it is about to be up and when it is up. League members are around the room distributing cards and pencils for those of you in the audience to submit questions. You may submit as many written questions for the candidates as you wish. Hold up the cards, and a League member will collect them throughout the forum, and bring them to me to read. Questions that fall in the same general category may be consolidated. If time does not allow for all questions to be addressed, you may contact the candidates directly after the forum. Early voting at the auditor's office begins on, began on Wednesday, January 15th. The primary election day is February 4th, one week from today. Uh, early voting for the special election itself, not the primary, begins on February 12th, and that special election will be on March 4th. Tonight, after the withdrawal of the third candidate, Sharon DeGraw, we have two candidates running for the, for two nomination positions in the February, February primary race. Because of the timing of the withdrawal, all three candidates will appear on the ballot. However, the active candidates are Ross Nussar and Oliver Weyline. Let's begin with two-minute opening statements, starting with Ross Nussar.
Well, first, thank you to the League of Women Voters, who does such a service to the community by hosting these events. I'm Ross Nussar, and I'm running for council because it's an opportunity to serve the community that has helped make me who I am today. Iowa City is a welcoming community that tries to bring out the best in people. At my core, I'm an Iowa City kid. I grew up going through the ICCSD and started my volunteer career in elementary school volunteering at the Iowa City Public Library. My wife, Hope, and I now live in the North Side, and we love the proximity to downtown and our public schools. There's no better place to raise a family than Iowa City. As a parent, I appreciate the importance of safe neighborhoods, a great public library, updated parks, and accessible transportation. As a realtor and developer, I have learned a ton about our local housing challenges. I'm deeply committed to supporting people facing housing crises. I have firsthand experienced drafting policy that supports affordable housing initiatives, including a program that provides housing for people experiencing chronic mental illness. As an advocate, I believe Iowa City's diversity makes us smarter and stronger because different perspectives push us to be better. As a councilperson, if elected, I will do my best to protect our community from the state and federal policies that divide our country so that we remain focused on the work of the council. I do not support disregarding laws or alienating people we don't agree with. The best way to insulate ourselves from undesired state and federal intervention is to find ways to bring people together. If elected, I will use my professional experience, commitment to service, and love for this community to secure Iowa City's social and economic future.
And next, Oliver Weyline.
Hi. Hi, first, I would also really like to thank the League. I would like to thank Channel 4 for always being here and broadcasting these really, really good events. And thanks for everybody for coming. I'm Oliver Weyline. I am also running for the vacancy that was left at, after Andrew Dunn resigned. I've lived on the North Side my entire, or my entire time living in Iowa City. I moved here when I was a teenager. I've fallen in love with the city, and I really, really think that this is a time where we need someone who can meet the moment and someone who is not afraid to do, pull out whatever tricks, do whatever it takes to defend our most marginalized communities in this time. What I do for my day job here in Iowa City is I work at Systems Unlimited. I've worked there for a total, I believe, of about eight years, working directly with community members, adults who have intellectual disabilities. That work is extremely rewarding for me, and I'm, I like the fact that I'm not making anybody else any money. And I got my foot in the door in Iowa City when it came to what you might call activism. When I was really young, a teenager still living here, I got involved in CWJ, and I met really cool people there. I showed up to whatever I could when it came to standing on picket lines, helping workers get wages back that have been stolen by their employer. I also went with, I also went with migrants who had ICE appointments in Cedar Rapids with CWJ and Catholic workers, so that was my foot in the door. The rest of what I've done in Iowa City might be, might be considered housing rights activism. I'm someone who truly in my heart believe housing is a human right, and I don't think that is something that should be commodified flat out. And I think that we are doing a lot of good things in Iowa City, but I think that there's a lot more that we can do. I was one of the founding board members of the Iowa City Tenants Union. We helped families fight eviction. We helped people get their security deposits back when they were fraudulently taken from them by landlords. We helped get prop, uh, critical maintenance done, and I've also done direct mutual aid for people, oh, that's it, for unhoused people in Iowa City. Thank you.
Thank you both. Now, I'll turn to questions from League members and from our audience. For those in attendance, please write your questions on cards that are being provided by League members. Raise your hand, and cards will be collected. Also, I'll ask that after these opening statements, please hold your applause into the, into the end so that we can spend more time answering your questions. Our first question, what are the top three things that the city council should do to improve the lives of Iowa City inhabitants? Starting with you, Mr. Weyline.
Thank you. Um, it's really hard because to get it down to three things, I think housing is something that is, obviously, I'm very passionate about doing all this work throughout my entire adult life when it comes to housing activism. I think affordable housing absolutely is one of the main things, and I think the city is doing a lot of good to approach that. But I think we can widen our array of tools and learn from other places around the country and around, around the world that doesn't center market solutions into housing, and I think that we can have a more community-based approach. I think that, like I said earlier in my opening statement, meeting the moment when it comes to the threat of, I mean, let's not sugarcoat it, like fascism from the federal and state level, and really, really doing whatever we can to protect our most marginalized people when it comes to immigrants, when it comes to trans people specifically, the disgusting vitriol we see. We, we can't go into it with pre-compliance or fear. We need to go into it with bravery and being willing to put our minds and bodies on the line for these people. And the third thing, I think, like I said, this is really hard to put it down to three things, but I really do believe that finding a ways to get us more revenue as a city, I think, then we can fund more things that we really want to fund. Thank you, and I have lots of ideas about that. Hope to get into it later.
Three things that we can do to better support the community and what we should focus on. Affordable housing has been a big issue that the community has really desire, has an impact, has a desire to impact. I've spent most of the past decade helping craft policy for affordable housing solutions. About 10 years ago, I was in one of the first discussions about Housing First models and bringing that to Iowa City. I absolutely support Housing First. Substance use, behavioral health, and mental health are absolutely a priority for me. It, these, these are all things that help stabilize vulnerable populations. I, and I understand these things because I've, I've lived this. I'm myself in the recovery community. I understand very much what it is to be in that community. I have volunteered through the Housing Fellowship. I'm currently the president of the Board of Directors for Community and Family Resources, and so I'm intimately involved with these challenges. And then finally, we are facing slashes from the state for property taxes, and so we need to grow our tax base. We need to ensure that Iowa City is gonna have a place economically in the future.
Well, let's go to that one specifically. So, in her state, State of the State address, the governor said to pass meaningful property tax reform, we also need to be lean at the local level. Given that the governor has called for local communities to be lean, what implications do you see for Iowa City if the legislature does indeed reform and/or reduce property taxes? Starting with you, Mr. Nussar.
Thank you. Broadly, we in Iowa City are a blue dot in a very red state, and we do not need to put a target on our backs. We need to avoid further state and federal intervention, and that means that we have to go along and, and figure out how we can deal with the legislation coming down by the state. We need to work with them, not against them. I don't know what that means yet. I don't know what the cuts are gonna be. I don't know what decisions were gonna be faced, but I can tell you that in going about that, I would rely heavily on the city manager, the city attorney, the city clerk for, for seeing what council has done and passed, and then city staff, as well as community input.
Yeah, this is the first question that gets brought up, it seems, every time someone asks, oh, you're running, how are we gonna deal with the budget cuts coming from Iowa? And I think that going in, I think that going into it with, like I said earlier, a mindset of pre-compliance, like, okay, we are going to have to pit communities against each other. We are going to have to throw our hands up and say, there's nothing we can do. We kind of just have to go along with what the state or the federal government is doing. I think that we can get more creative with it. I think that there are models around the world, around the country, about people getting creative with it that Iowa City hasn't looked at yet. In Decorah, they are doing something right now with trying to publicize their utilities, which is another revenue stream that also helps with climate, climate change. I grew up in Cedar Falls, Iowa, and we have a public utilities company, and it's a massive source of revenue for the city. That's one thing. You know, I've looked at public banking. We have a model like that in the United States, in North Dakota, and it gets huge revenues for the state of North Dakota, and it gets huge, and it makes huge equitable loans available to not only the city, but to citizens that are doing things like starting a small business. I highly recommend people look up public banking. It's not too popular in the United States, but in North Dakota, there is one. And, oh, thank you so much.
Our next and also very popular topic is on affordable housing. Can you speak generally to your thoughts on affordable housing, what you've done for it, and particularly, people would like to know how you're going to provide it without cutting other services? Starting with you, Mr. Weyline.
So, yes, this is huge to me, working in housing activism my whole life with the Iowa City Tenants Union, an informed tenant base, really, and getting tenants to understand the power that they have as renters has been core to my beliefs as a way that we can get people, or a way that we can get renters more empowered to fight for their rights, and things like that generally will drive down rents when they have more power and people, and they don't fear their landlords, things like that. So that is the work that I've done when it comes to helping families fight eviction, looking into ways that the city and the state can expand renters' rights with something like a tenants', a tenants' bill of rights. And when it comes to affordable housing, it's so hard to do this in a minute, but, you know, as someone who's studied things like social housing and public housing my entire life, there are models that we can work with that are just not explored in the United States that can generate revenue for the city and can meet a need. All people deserve housing as a human right, and there are ways that we can go about that, and we don't need to keep kicking the can down the road with temporary market-based solutions, and we can, oh, thank you so much.
Yeah, so I've dedicated my career to housing, and during my board involvement, that's been key to it. I've supported housing. I, affordable housing is a multifaceted problem, and, and it requires a mixture of solutions. So, providing housing-first solutions, providing solutions for working, middle-class incomes, providing homeownership solutions, providing rental solutions are all things that are needed. I've worked to, to develop three different housing programs. They're all affordable, and they're all sustainable, too. And, and so it's, through my, through my work at the Housing Fellowship, through my work with, volunteering through Habitat for Humanity, Community and Family Resources, and then Successful Living. We can certainly do a lot more. The city has $15 million to spend toward affordable housing. That's earmarked, and we can, we can deploy that responsibly and in a way that it will return back to the community.
All right. The next question is on the city charter, which has, is undergoing review and has some questions related to it. Should the, should District City, should District City Council members be elected citywide or by district, and should the mayor be elected differently, either by popular or by council? And I believe that begins with you, Mr. Nussar.
So this is a process that is just happening, and they submitted, and John Ballmer, a former mayor of Iowa City, and some of the other people did a lot of work on, on submitting a recommendation to the city council. I wasn't personally involved in that work. I trust the people who were personally involved in that work. I am aware of the recommendations, which is to not have a direct election for the mayor and to support the districts being citywide, and, and I'm in support of that.
It, it's hard to say. After reading, after reading the recommendations, I think I would need more information in, on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis and meeting with people in districts about how they themselves would feel they want to be represented. Would they want to be represented by someone directly in their neighborhoods, or would they be fine being represented by anybody from any neighborhood? It's a, I, I think that is something that can go back into the question of how do we further democratize our city of Iowa City? And I, I think approaching these questions in a very neighborhood-specific, district-specific way, instead of, while respecting the work that goes into recommendations like this, I think everyday working-class people should have the ultimate say in something like this.
All right. Our next one, how do you each approach the question of labor within Iowa City? What is your experience with labor, with labor union leadership and rank-and-file? And starting in with you, Mr. Weyline.
I am a rank-and-file worker. I have been my whole life. I am a member of a labor union. I'm not currently directly unionized in my workplace, though I've tried many times, and the fight continues. But labor is central. Unionism is, unions are central to my ideology of how I think we are going to get out of something like what we are. Workers coming together, tenants coming together, and utilizing their power and flexing their power directly, and not necessarily looking at only elected officials or only city officials to solve their problems. I have been on countless pickets. I have been, I have done fundraisers for striking workers directly in this, in Johnson County and all over the state and nationally. I have been to every single labor event that I've been, that I've been able to in Iowa City, because I think as working people, we only have each other, and we need to stand in solidarity with each other. And I think that reaching across, reaching across different industries and having one solidarity, union-style organization is how we should approach unionism, and, oh, stop. Could talk about that for hours.
Yeah, and so I'm gonna let everyone in on a little secret about running for office. If you don't know much about the unions, the second that you run for office, you know an awful lot about the unions. They all reach out to you, and I am for meeting people, connecting with them, listening to them, and understanding them. And so I've been fortunate enough to, I've, I've not had a whole lot of experience prior to now dealing with unions. It's just not something that, and as an independent contractor, that's not something that I've done. But I can certainly listen, and I have certainly enjoyed meeting the people from the various unions and starting to form meaningful relationships. I absolutely believe in labor.
All right. Our next question, beginning with you again, Mr. Nussar. What do you think you'll bring to the city council that's different?
I think, I think that I'll bring real estate experience where, where it's needed. So I have my, devoted my career on real estate and the practice of real estate. I understand the pragmatic value and the pragmatic touches of real estate and how to operate things at different levels. I understand the pragmatic constraints of lending laws and how that affects the housing that gets built. I understand how to develop a city and how to create policy that shows that we are open for business and not closed. And, and I think that Iowa City gets a bad rap on that. I think that we need to do better going forward, understanding, hearing all groups, and crafting policy that allows our community to, to grow our tax base, that allows our, and while preserving, while preserving the culture that we love and evolving the culture that we so love. We've done that really well with ICDD.
I really think, as a rank-and-file worker, as someone who knows what it's like to struggle as a renter, as someone who has been in the weeds providing mutual aid to unhoused people and know directly their experiences, as someone who has for so long heard, been in the weeds of hearing the plight of renters and people who can't make ends meet, and being someone who isn't a boss, being someone who isn't a part of like a political elite class, being someone who comes straight from working people of Iowa City, I think that that perspective, I think the perspective is from someone who is willing to think outside the box and really do reading and research and look at all ends of the globe to find solutions to problems that we have, to really just dig deep instead of throwing our hands up and saying we can't do something, instead of saying we need to keep our head down, instead of saying we need to be compliant to the state or the federal government. I think that I'm someone who's not afraid of these people, and I'm not afraid to have a target on myself. Oh, thank you.
Great. Our next question, or questions to roll together. How do you uphold Johnson County and Iowa City's commitment to nondiscrimination laws and principles in the face of pressure from the state and national government, and particularly threats to transgender and LGBTQ+ residents?
Can you repeat the, there was some feedback I couldn't hear.
Ah, sorry about that.
That's okay.
It's, how would you uphold Johnson County and Iowa City's commitment to nondiscrimination laws and principles in the face of pressure from state and national governments? If you can, speak specifically to threats to transgender and LGBTQ+ individuals.
Yeah, so I, I know so many transgender people. So many of them are my friends, and I've lived with them, and I've, and I've played music with them, I've been in the community, community with them for so long, and this is deeply personal to me, and I think that there are ways that we can go about, learning, listening to the Iowa ACLU. They have strategies, and they have been having, they've been having meetings and sessions about how cities like Iowa City can combat state laws and this. I've been listening to people at One Iowa and the recommendations that they have. I've been listening to the transgender community itself. I've been meeting with them directly, constantly, about this type of thing, and I will never back down in something like this. They can throw anything they have at me and Iowa City, and I think Iowa City, not only as a city, as city council, but we need to be strengthening our grassroots community organizations that can help come out and defend these people on a real ground organizing basis, instead of always waiting for city and state governments to come protect us. And I think using a position in the city council to, to go to the legal end of it, oh, thank you. Time constraints killing me.
I, supporting people is very important. Supporting rights is very important. How will I do this? I don't know right now because I don't know what's coming at us. I do know how I would thoughtfully approach it. I would figure out what is coming at me and what is coming at Iowa City, and then we'd have to work to be very careful in this. We, we, these are people at stake, and people being at stake require very careful and personal solutions. And so I would work with the fellow, my fellow electeds, and then I would work with staff, and I would work to hear the community and figure out what the best response for Iowa City would be, and how we can use that as part of our strategy in dealing with things that might come our way in the future that we are not anticipating.
One of your most important roles would be managing the city manager on behalf of the voters. How do you let voters know that you are managing the city manager?
Yeah.
Mr. Nussar.
Call Jeff and host a Facebook Live event. No, I, I would, I would know, I would let people know that I am managing the city manager through thoughtful communication and through the public meetings. I, I would direct the city manager to, to help with council, to help investigate issues that are pertinent to council, to, to meet with the rest. We are running for a position of one of seven, so I would work with my fellow counselors to ensure that our priority that our priorities are being effectively addressed.
I think that, while I like Jeff a lot, and I think it's an extremely difficult role and maintaining good relationships with all city staff is incredibly important. I think that at the end of the day, we were the ones who were elected as city council. So we need to show through our actions that we are the ones who are being thoughtful. We are the ones that are coming up with ideas. We are the ones that are going out and meeting with constituents. We are the ones that are putting in the work to direct staff. And that doesn't mean we don't listen to city staff at all. That doesn't mean we think to value their work. But I think at the end of the day, we just need to show through our actions that we know that as elected officials, the power should be in our hands. Because the power should be with the people, not in appointed city position. But yeah, no shade or disrespect to Jeff at all. I like the guy a lot.
All right. Now we have a small bevy of public safety-related questions that I'm not skillful enough to quite combine. So the first one on, according to everystat.org, Johnson County has the lowest rate of gun violence per 100,000 residents in Iowa. Over one death is still too many. How do you propose to promote gun safety in a culture of responsible gun ownership in Iowa City? And I would note from a different...what impact on this, if any, does the glorification of guns and violence have on our student population through social media?
So I think that the city has done a really good job of reducing violent crime through its holistic approach. Through its approach in not focusing on punitive measures, not focusing on incarceration, but trying to do things that are not carceral. Because we know that mass incarceration does not work. We know that going other approaches does work in actually preventing the violence and it doesn't perpetuate the violence. I am someone who is a gun owner myself, some of you might know. And I think that as someone who is a gun owner and as someone who is not a member of the NRA, who hates the NRA, who thinks that toxic masculine American gun culture is terrible, I think that it's put me in a unique position as someone who has firearms because I was...my partner and I were dealing with intense harassment as retaliation for participating in anti-racism protests. And I think that it puts someone like me in a unique position to promote gun safety and to promote community solutions to getting in the way of gun violence. And that mixed with holistic approaches, you know, things like having a community safe. I have people store firearms in my safe if they don't feel safe around firearms. And your average NRA stooge will not do that because they are rugged individualists. Oh, thank you so much.
Yeah, so I'm just against glorification of firearms on social media. Social media is what kids see. It's what people see as electeds. We are the ones who are supposed to set examples. We are the ones who need to show the positive impact and show that example. I'm also a gun owner, but I don't have an assault rifle. I don't believe that assault rifles are right. They're dangerous. They kill people. They are not meant for hunting. And so it's...that's a personal belief. Gun safety is great, but it's not going to cure our problem. I don't think our problem's going to be cured at the local level. I think that we can do things to help impact solutions, but it's going to take something greater than here and now to help that. But certainly not promoting it.
Right. Our next question. Will Iowa City Police Department participate, assist? Or basically, how will they be involved in ICE enforcement at the local level? Starting with you, Mr. Nussor.
I don't know. These are all things...this goes back to so many of these questions. Is that we are facing a lot of uncertainty. Normally, these types of elections aren't happening in January, right after a new president has been inaugurated and a new agenda is flowing down crazy. We don't know what's going to happen. I don't know what...how the Iowa City Police is going to be able to deal with it. I know that I would like to be part of those discussions. I know that I would like to value the individuals and show support for all of our community, especially our immigrant populations as we deal with whatever is coming down. It's the great unknown right now and I'm here to meet it.
I think that ICE should not exist. And I think that ICE is a terrorist organization in the United States that separates families. And I've seen the real impact that it has had on our local level, in the state level. I've seen the raids and I've seen the fallout from families missing permanently loved ones. And so I would do whatever it took to make sure that as a city, we do not participate in this thuggery at all. And I'm not going to shy away from that. And I'm not going to be worried if Kim Reynolds is going to be mad about that. And if she tries to come in and do something, then I think that as elected officials, we should be prepared to deal with that. That doesn't mean we do things without research. That doesn't mean we do things without caution. But we can't be cowardly at the same time. These are our most vulnerable people in Iowa City. And I think that protecting them from state and federal authoritarianism and violence is the main thing that we need to be focusing on. And going into it with an attitude of, "We will not let this happen," I think is forefront. Thank you.
Next question, and starting with you, Mr. Wyline. Do you have 20 hours per week to devote to city council business?
Yeah, I do. And I always keep very...I keep extremely busy as someone who... I play in multiple bands around town and I like tour. And I also work a full-time job at Systems Unlimited. I also have many hobbies. But it's...I've always made time to do things in the community because it is what gives me the greatest feeling of worth of community. It gives me...it's the joy of my life to try to do things to affect people in a positive way. It brings...it is...I don't want to...it sounds corny, but I feel like it's a life purpose. You know, I think that it's something that just fuels me every single day. So I will always get up, I will always make time, especially when it comes to these extremely serious matters. And yeah, I'll always make time to meet with anybody, to talk with anybody, even if they've said mean things about me. It doesn't matter. I don't hold grudges and I will...yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I do. So being in real estate, I'm uniquely positioned where I work seven days a week and I set my own schedule on this. And that has allowed me to be involved in the volunteering opportunities that I've been able to be involved in. This is an extension of it. I grew up here. I care very much about our community. I have kids here and I care about their future, too. And I think that...I don't think we should...that we should meet the state with opposition. I don't think we should raise against them. I think that we need to figure out how we can stay off their radar and keep being Iowa City and keep our thing going and protect our people and not give them a reason to come down and break down our doors.
All right. Next one that I have, and there are still many to juggle here. I just lost it. What do you think the relationship between the city and the university should be? Starting with Mr. Nussor.
That's another tough one. So growing up, half of my family is the city and half of my family was the university. My grandfather was a guy named Sandy Boyd, who was the president of the university here for a very long time. And then my dad's side of the family was Hand's Jewelers. And so that's a business that's been here. I think, again, it comes down to good communication and building a good culture and a good relationship. I can't tell you what tomorrow's going to bring. I know that Iowa City and the University of Iowa are inextricably linked and we'll keep it that way.
Yeah, I think, you know, obviously Iowa City and the University of Iowa are linked permanently, hopefully. And while we need to maintain a good relationship, we can't let that relationship bully us into remaining quiet on certain things. The university and the Board of Regents that are right-wing appointees of Kim Reynolds engage in thinly veiled union busting all the time. And I think the city needs to play a role into...our graduate workers at the university, they cannot make ends meet. They cannot afford housing. Our nurses at the university who deliver our children, who save our lives, they have to commute long, they can't afford their housing. They are working terrible hours. I just, you know, talking with these unions, it's...we cannot let the fact that the university brings so much to Iowa City turn us compliant into the things that the university is doing. So I would use my position as a city council to work with the university, but also not sugarcoat it and put it out there that we are not going to tolerate you treating our residents of Iowa City in a way, our working-class people in Iowa City, a certain way. So thank you.
Great. For our next question. Governing is so different from being an activist for a specific issue or working for a paycheck. What can you say to persuade us that you have the patience and energies to bring to a range of responsibilities and issues necessary for governance? Starting with you, Mr. Wyline.
I feel like patience is...one of my favorite quotes is, "Anger is a temporary madness." And that's something that I've gone my whole life with thinking, even though you might feel personally hurt by something, you sit with that feeling and then you calm down and you approach it logically and you approach it with compassion and you give people the benefit of the doubt. I'm somebody who, if I know somebody is working in good faith, if I know someone cares about the community, even if we vehemently disagree about things, I think that I'm able to work with anybody if I know that in their heart is the right thing and not...and I would never hold a grudge or act vindictively about anything, anything that anybody's going to have done because the community is more important than personal feelings. And I think that working so much and being in the same rooms as people who are having to keep cool while being in the same rooms as people who are oppressing other people, I think that that is giving me the temperament to know when to hold my ground, know when to be calm. Thank you.
So the question, as I heard it, was what do I bring? And how can I convince the public that my leadership is going to be able to be effective? And I'm currently the president of the Board of Directors of Community and Family Resources, which we are between 16 and 22 members, depending on the time. We have a meeting on Thursday night and three more people will come on. But it's unique in the sense that most of the fellow board members are supervisors in other counties throughout Iowa. And some are Democrat, some are Republican. If I can get them to get along, to have a great culture there and to have a good experience toward progress, I feel confident that I can take those same thought processes and apply them to the city council.
Next question. What will you do to preserve the North Side neighborhood? What types of housing, if any, would be added? And will you promise not to add any luxury housing?
That's such an interesting question to me because I love the North Side. I mean, the North Side's my jam. I live right in the center of it. Of course I want to protect the North Side. My family came...when they came to Iowa City, they came to the North Side on Lynn Street. So there is history in the North Side, there's vibrancy in the North Side. Would I not add any luxury housing? Well, I'll tell you what. Going on city council will limit my ability to develop. Like, it is going to be a detriment to me personally. And so I don't know. I'm not going to promise that because I'm not going to promise anything that would be of detriment to my career. It would just be unfair of me to both the public and to myself. And so I'll do everything that I possibly can to support the North Side and to continue its incredible history.
I'm pretty sure I can fairly promise that I'm not going to build any luxury units in the North Side. Because I'm not a developer or a landlord. But people have this conversation all the time about the North Side. And I don't think that these two things need to be in conflict with each other when it comes to adding things to the North Side and maintaining the character of the North Side. There are ways by engaging with the community. If we need to add density, if we need to utilize places in the North Side for things like affordable housing, I think that those things do not need to contradict each other. If we bring people to the table, if we really work with like the architecture and the mood and the character of the North Side. I've lived in the North Side my whole life and I live in probably what most people would call student housing because I'm a low-income earner at my job and my partner and I split a one-bedroom apartment. And it's a beautiful home. And I don't think that stigmatizing things like that, like multifamily units... I think that there are ways that we can go about it while maintaining the character and also making sure that we have places that aren't just single-family units in the North Side. Thank you.
Great. So I have been getting a variety of questions for one candidate and have been prioritizing ones that both can respond to. I do have a couple that I've gotten different variations of. So I have one question for each of you from...that has come in to me in more than one version. I will start, if I'm remembering my order, with Mr. Wyline. And variations of this are that they are...that some folks are troubled by your social media posts. And would you like to respond to this?
I don't know what social media posts are directly being referred to, but when it comes to glorifying firearms, there are people that, for some reason, have dug through social media history going back to 11-year-old Tumblr posts. I don't really know why they're doing that. And they're trying to put things in front of people to intentionally impugn my character and mischaracterize my character. And so on social media, things like just posting pictures of myself at the shooting range, pictures from seven years ago of me simply holding a firearm, people are viewing that as glorifying violence when nothing could be further from the truth. Anybody who knows me, anybody who knows what I have done in my life, the ways in which that I have gone out of my way as a gun owner to make sure that it's something that is safe and community-minded and making sure that people who are in similar positions like me, who have been the target of harassment, anti-racist harassment or anti-LGBT harassment, that they feel safe to come to me if they feel like they need to make that choice. I'm not telling anybody to go buy firearms, but if they make that tough choice, they have someone like me, not some NRA stooge, to come to, to learn about gun safety and to make sure that they can be safe. That's...I didn't address everything I wanted to, but yeah.
As you say, one minute's tough.
It's tough.
And Mr. Nussor, do you consider a conflict of interest to be a prominent landlord who will be involved in rezoning and development on the council?
So I'm flattered by the fact that someone has referred to me as a prominent landlord. I'm not actually a landlord by definition. I operate a couple of Airbnbs and I help manage property. But do I think that that will...I've kind of answered this earlier. This is going to hurt me. For as long as I'm on council, any conflict that I have, I won't be able to be involved in. There will be certain conflicts that I'm just straight prohibited from doing by state law. And this is checked by the other six council members, by the city attorney, by the city manager, by the city staff and probably by the state now. They'll probably be looking at us. So I think that when it comes to conflicts of interest, we'll be just fine.
All right. Let's move on to the final closing question that we have. What is one issue that we have not addressed here that you would like to raise? Starting with Mr. Nussor.
You know, I think that what we have talked about here is a lot in a very short period of time. Just building community, keeping the culture good, keeping Iowa City weird, keeping all of the things that we like accessible and fine for us to use. We need to keep our basic services going, fair free transportation being one of them. I dropped my kid off at Southeast today and there are so many students that take the bus to school. These are very important things for our city. And we've done great work at building these and we can continue to do so.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. Fair free public transit is one of the coolest things that we've done in Iowa City. And especially for low-income people and unhoused people that I meet with frequently, they tell me that this is absolutely essential to them to get around the city and to not be isolated in one area. And it improves their lives to a great degree. And not only is it something that's more climate-friendly, we need to... I don't think we talked about climate enough as a city. That is one thing that I don't think we talked about enough and is core to understanding how we are going to maintain ourselves as a city. Because we can't continue down the path as a city or as a country of relying on fossil fuels, which is why earlier I brought up public utilities. It can give us a more democratic approach to how we go about climate. And look into what Decor has done, look into public utilities in Cedar Falls, Iowa, where I grew up. It's a very cool thing we can do that generate revenue. It's a very cool thing we can do that generate revenue and really help climate. I think that one thing the city has been doing that's amazing is our permanent supported housing and learning from models all across the world in Helsinki, in Hennepin County, all these places, we really just need to expand on that and make it more accessible to more people. It saves us money and it saves lives.
Thank you very much. Each candidate will now have two minutes for closing statements. We will begin with you, Mr. Yline.
I just want to thank everybody for coming. Thank you Ross for coming. Thank you to Suzie for keeping time, even though it's been hard. Thank you Shannon. Thank you League of Women Voters. I, I really just want to say that I love Iowa City more than anything. I came here not knowing if I was going to live here and pretty, live here forever and pretty soon I realized that this is going to be my permanent home. And there's no place like it. I'm someone who's traveled all around the world. I've been to most continents and I always am excited, no matter what, to come back to Iowa City because it is so unique and it is so special. And I just, everybody in Iowa City, it's, it's just, it would be an honor to serve this community that I love so much and someone who has, like I said before, someone who's a rank-and-file worker, someone who has been into, has done union work for so many years since I knew what unions were in like middle school. And I just think having that perspective on council of someone who comes in here and is someone who isn't, we're not talking about low-income people. We have someone who has direct experience with currently being low-income in Iowa City and that is me. I make about 30K a year and I work full-time at Systems Unlimited. And I think that it's also a way that we can approach Iowa City. We know that privatizing things like Medicaid has been detrimental to healthcare in general. And I've seen it firsthand on my clients and it sickens me. And I think that there are many things that we can put back into the community's hands in Iowa City that will give us revenue. I'm talking about banking, I'm talking about utilities, I'm talking about housing. We can really tackle root issues of housing if we just open up the box a little bit. If we decide that, not just kicking the can down the road and making the wealthiest among us even wealthier by giving them tax benefits, that we can really move towards a more equitable social, housing as a human right-based solution to this problem. All right. Thank you so much, everybody.
Yeah, thank you everyone for coming here and Oliver, it's nice to finally see you. And I, I think that one of the things that I'm learning in, in this forum is that there are issues that, that we see similarly on. I believe that I have a level of experience that is going to bring to council what it needs right now through, through my real estate experience, but also through my policy crafting experience on boards as well as volunteer work, as, as well as my one-on-one interactions with vulnerable populations as well, which we didn't touch on as much tonight, but plug for Friendly Farm and plug for Recovery. And, and so it's, it's been, it's been fortunate to, to be here. I think that one of the biggest things that I've heard that we disagree on is how to approach the state and national government. I don't think we need to put a target on our back. I, I think that we need to craft this very carefully. I think that we need to tread lightly. I think that we need to protect our citizens and I think that that is paramount. I think that we need to not respond brashly. I think that we need to thoughtfully analyze policy that we create. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you to our candidates. The recording of this forum will be available on the League of Women Voters website and Facebook page. In addition, rebroadcasts of this forum will be run on Iowa City Channel 4. See their website for program schedules. We'd like you to remind you that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and that sponsorship of this forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. Remember, early voting is now available at the Johnson County Auditor's Office. The primary election day is February 4th. Only residents of District C are eligible to vote in the primary. Early voting for the March 4th special election begins on February 12th. All residents of Iowa City are able to vote in that special election. Good night.
I've never done anything.